All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council Meeting of August 7th, 2023, to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter. Mr. Young. Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would you...
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick, thank you.
I would like to make a motion to excuse Council members Walters and Young and Carter, please.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath to excuse Council members Young, Carter, and Walters. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. I feel like I need to put a little rudder. We're a little out of balance. Would you please join me in the pledge? Okay, we are on to announcements and committee reports. I only have one announcement. Just thanks for everybody, staff, and many involved in having a great Arts Festival weekend. I know it was so great that we wanted to keep the stage up a little bit longer and block Commercial Avenue a little bit later, so thanks for your patience and thanks for getting that cleared up. So, anyway, Commercial Avenue at 10th is back open and a great time seemed to be had by many. Okay, next up is Fiber Committee report. Mayor Miller. Mr. McDougall.
Fiber Committee met last Thursday and actually got some fresh numbers fresh off the press here, so I'll give those to you all. We have, as of, I guess, earlier today, 1,882 residential customers on net and 164 business customers. So, that gives us a grand total of 2,046 customers connected, and we have surpassed the 45% take rate citywide, which is a really nice number. Gwimus View, which is under construction currently, we have just under 10% of those customers connected, and they are at just under 39% take rate as well. So, they've been going up and up, and that's great. Only a couple other small items I wanted to make note. I mean, we have the ongoing discussion of finances. We did get the 500K award from Skagit County to...for the EDA, so add that into the 2.25 million grant for that piece. And later tonight, we'll be talking about a contract for the materials for the next phase. And then another item I wanted to call out is currently our downstream peak of traffic is 3.5 gig during the day out of 10 gig possible and 5.5 gig in the early evening, so we're getting really good utilization on the network. That means people are using it, so great. And that's pretty much what I have.
All right, thank you. Next up is Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. So, we had a meeting July 26th, a HACS meeting. You know, we kind of had a rambling meeting. We talked about a lot of different things, but just kind of idea generating. So, the one thing we...the first thing we talked about was the multifamily housing tax exemption program. We had it for about 10 years on the books in the early 2000s. It was never utilized, and there is talk of whether or not we should possibly bring it back if it would be a good option for our community. Other communities have you...have put on the books and have had...have seen success. You kind of...you would choose kind of a targeted area of town and offer that multifamily tax exemption program, and there's a couple different lengths of time with varying requirements associated with it. But we also had some questions about when you build a new building, how...when is that additional value added to tax rolls and how it works, kind of the nitty-gritty number? So, we also might want to talk to the county about that, too. We...and we also know that there's an issue with...in the 80s, there was a USDA tax credit program, just really good funding, and a lot of those apartment buildings that exist in Anacortes are aging out of that program. So, we're seeing a number of residents kind of come to us with concerns of what's going to happen to them and what is going to happen to those buildings. So, we are going to look at some other communities and what options they've had success with. I know that there's one that was rescued in Bellingham. So, we're just kind of...we're trying to think of ideas of how to do that. And then also, how do we harmonize kind of what our goals are as a city? How can we support the Housing Authority and Family Center and various organizations to utilize grant opportunities? So, really articulating that so that it's available when those opportunities come up. I think that was it.
Okay, thanks. Next up is Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met today at 4:00 because we had so much to talk about. So, we had a two-hour meeting, and I got a gr...I was there with staff, and we had a great talk about the capital facilities plan, particularly the wastewater department and what's coming up there. We also talked about transportation projects and storm...stormwater projects, and there are a lot of them, and they are fascinating, actually. And I look forward to delving into them more as time goes on, but it was a great overview, and staff is doing a really good job at their timing and putting this all together well in advance of our budget discussions that will happen this fall. So, that was really great. We also talked about a couple of things quickly. There was a sewer line failure on N Avenue by the library very recently, and that got put quickly onto the agenda for tonight because we need a contractor out there tomorrow. It's under control right now, but we need to get it fixed. Then there is a preventative sewer line replacement in the alley between 20th and 21st Streets near Good Bagels, and it's a preventative...preventative maintenance. It's an old clay line, and there's a gas...anyway, it's not a good...it's...we need to fix that. So, that will be on next week's agenda. And also on next week's agenda, there's a capital facilities project. It's roof replacements out at Washington Park, and the contract for those will be on next week's agenda. And that was it. Thanks.
All right, next up is Public Safety Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. To continue the trend of discussing the capital facilities plan, that was also what was discussed at Public Safety, both on the fire EMS and police side. So, on the fire side, we were continuing to discuss the ladder truck, any updates that may happen at the main station, and whether or not we will build a ladder truck training center. So, getting some feedback on that, having some discussions around that as well. And then on the fire side, we got an update on hiring. There are still lateral and entry-level recruiting meetings and appointments happening, and we may have a new hire coming in in October. And then on the police side, again, not some...not so much like our capital facilities plan, but talking about patrol cars, which will be on the agenda tonight. We got a bit of an update about the criminal justice training center that's getting built here in Skagit County, still going back and forth a little bit on the location of where it's going to be, but we hope to have a solid answer by that in November. And then we also got an hiring update, which the rest of you will get closer to the end of our updates with our news...new folks being sworn in tonight. And that's it.
All right, thanks. Next is Port City Liaison Committee.
Mayor Miller. That's me, too.
Ms. Hubick.
Okay. So, no real capital facilities plan discussion there, but going back and forth a little bit to keep the port updated with what the city's doing and keep the city updated with what the port's doing, gave a...port gave a quick thank you for the interlocal agreement that came through on the last agenda. The port gave us an update on the commercial pump-out funding that came in through the state, so $800,000 that came out of the state's biennial budget. And then electrification that is coming to the port, about $500,000. The port is continuing to have conversations with people at their facilities to understand where electrification can best happen and where it needs to go and what they're actually going to use it for. Also had a quick review of the Arts Festival and the Creative District. We had a presentation on that from the Arts Festival not too long ago, so just making sure that everybody had the same map. We also touched base on the R Avenue Roundabout, hoping to send that into bid this month, targeting construction in early September. So, the Roundabout will be at R and 30th with pedestrian improvements from 24th to 32nd. A $300,000 grant is coming in for a Q Avenue crosswalk that the city and the port will be partnering up on later. And then we also just had a quick update about the Outfall Project. It's been discussed a lot here at city councils. So, just a quick reminder, the upland portion, the hope is to have that ready in early 2024 with the water portion set for August 2024. Thank you.
All right, thanks a lot. And next up, I know everybody was patiently listening to all the great work that the committees are doing, but we're on to Item 3F, and I think that's why quite a few of you are here tonight, including many of Anacortes' finest. This is for police officers swearing in and non-commissioned and commissioned police officers. So, look, Chief Floyd has already made it up. I didn't have to do my normal delaying to get you in time. So, I will turn it over to Chief Floyd, and then we'll do some swearing in.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. Good evening, members of council, members of the audience in attendance here and both online. We're here tonight to witness the oath of office for two of our newer members at the Anacortes Police Department, our newest record staff member, Hannah Berlue, and Officer Chad Pledwell. So, first, Hannah came to the Anacortes Police Department after working in the mortgage industry. Hannah started with the Anacortes Police Department in March of 2023, and we would like to recognize her family that's joining us tonight to witness her oath of office, her husband Gary, her son Daniel, and goddaughters Emily and Zoe. Mayor Miller, if you'd administer the oath of office.
Okay.
And that brings us to Officer Chad Pledwell. So, Officer Pledwell came to the Anacortes Police Department as a lateral transfer from the Everson Police Department in Watcom County as he wanted to move to an agency that could offer him greater opportunity for variety in his career. Officer Pledwell spent approximately five years working for the city of Everson, and during our background investigation, he received great reviews by all individuals that worked with him there and in neighboring agencies. Officer Pledwell considered the move to the Anacortes Police Department based partly on a recommendation from a friend who's also a current Anacortes officer. He's served some time in the National Guard and has earned a bachelor's degree in science from Eastern Oregon University. We would like to recognize Officer Pledwell's family that's in attendance tonight to witness his oath of office, which includes his fiancee, Emilia, parents Todd and Linda, and soon-to-be-in-laws, Clay, Dionne, Josh, and Mariah. Mayor Miller, if you'd administer the oath of office.
All right, best part of my job, and I only messed it up slightly. So, thank you very much, and welcome to the Anacortes Police Department. All right, we are on to public comment, and yeah, for those of you who are guests here, you can certainly...don't have to stay for the rest of the activities, but we appreciate you coming by and supporting your loved ones. All right, Item 4 is public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight, and I don't have anybody signed up. I do have a written public comment from Najah Rua, and that is in your packet. Anybody else wish to address the council? Okay, we are moving on to Item Number 5, which is our consent agenda, Items A through D. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, and D.
A second.
A motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. McDougall to approve Consent Agenda Items A through D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, motion carries. We are all the way to other business now, and Item 6A, interlocal agreement with Skagit County for mutual assistance on minor projects. This is a discussion item with possible action, and Mr. Holman, interim Public Works Director, is already at the podium. Mr. Holman.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of the council, members of the public here and at home. Tim Holman, city engineer and interim Public Works Director. What we have before you this evening is an interlocal agreement between the city and Skagit County for mutual assistance on minor projects. We achieve two...this is a continuation of an existing agreement that we've had with Skagit County that dates back, oh, quite a long time, but the last one was...they come in five-year terms, so the last one was dating back to 2017. This...the current agreement expired at the end of last year, and we were just getting around to getting it updated again this year for another five years. The agreement's exactly the same as it was last time and has been for quite a while. We do a few things with this agreement. We achieve some minor projects, like it says. We've had the county do some chip ceiling for us a number of times over the past few years, as well as other minor projects. The other thing that this agreement allows for and does for us is if we were to have an emergency situation, this agreement will allow us to do work out in the county and the county to do work within the city limits or on city facilities that might be in the county, and we would all be reimbursable from a FEMA standpoint were it to progress that far. So, this is a good thing, not just day-to-day, but also to have in place for an emergency situation, and I'd be more than willing to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Council, questions for Mr. Holman. All right, I guess it was pretty clear in the packet, so any action, perhaps?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. It's good to know that this is the same agreement as before. Seems like it's working great, so I move that the city council authorize the mayor to execute this interlocal cooperation agreement between the city and Skagit County.
Second.
Hey, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the interlocal agreement with Skagit County for mutual assistance on minor projects. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, could I take the vote, please?
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, on to Item 6B. This is Ordinance 4055, updating Chapter 1.30 in the Anacortes Municipal Code, and I believe it's companion with 6C, but I'll let Ms. Swetnam talk about that. And these are discussion items with possible action, and we've seen these before, so Ms. Swetnam.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, and members of council, members of the audience, scouts. So, tonight is the second read on Ordinance 4055, and this ordinance would update Chapter 1.30 of the Anacortes Municipal Code. So, to review the timeline, this...the changes in this code section were first discussed back in June at the Finance Committee, again in July. There was a first read on July 24th, and tonight is the second read before city council. There are three areas of update to this code chapter: review requirements, approval and signature authority, and then emergency purchasing. So, I won't go through all the details of the ordinance, but just wanted to highlight the few areas that were changed from the last draft to this draft. And I believe we captured all of the comments that the council had at the last discussion, and I appreciate the feedback. So, the first change was to Section 130030, and that was the section that dealt with streamlining the review process. That, per some recommendations of council, that language was amended to simplify by allowing delegation of the clerk treasurer's review to a department head and allowing delegation of the city attorney's review to the contract specialist. The next area of update was in Section 130040F, and that added permission for the mayor to delegate execution of contract modifications, not just contracts, that meet mayor's contracting authority to department heads for the department that the contract is under. Finally, Section 130090, which dealt with emergency contracting procedures. The language was amended to require that in such an emergency, the mayor declare an emergency, and also to require the mayor to notify council that there was an emergency declaration. So, those were the changes that were made. In your packet, you had a clean copy and a markup copy, and I am happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Swetnam. Council, any questions or comments? Okay, then I'll go right to any comments or motions. And thank you for acknowledging the scouts being here. So welcome, glad to have you.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
Yeah, I think, you know, after the reviews, everything, it looks great, so I move that city council adopt Ordinance 4055, updating Chapter 1.30 of the Anacortes Municipal Code.
Second.
Hey, a motion by Mr. McDougall, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath to approve Ordinance Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, take the vote, please.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thanks. Next up, Item 6C, Resolution 3123, updating the purchasing policy and procurement roster procedures. This is also a discussion and possible action, and this is also Ms. Swetnam.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. This is sort of the companion piece to the code section that just got updated. I don't have any slides for you because there weren't any changes that were made since the last version. I went back and reviewed the meeting notes in the minutes and watched the video, and we didn't have any recommended changes from council, so the version that's in your packet accepted the previous changes that were noted to the pre-existing version of the purchasing policy in the last draft, and we're recommending approval, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Ms. Swetnam?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, Ms. Swetnam. I would have liked to see the redlined...the redline version in this, too, like you did for the previous contract. At least I don't have it in my packet, but we had seen it before also, so I just really like that if someone was tuning in now, they would see the redline version. I think that's really helpful, and I would even be fine without the original because the redline shows all those things. But other than that, I think it's all good. So, I move that city council adopt Resolution 3123, updating the purchasing policy and procurement roster procedures.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick to adopt Resolution 3123. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. On to Item 6D, which is Resolution 3128, authorizing mayor to approve the purchase of up to five police vehicles, and this is listed as an action item because I think Chief is going to tell us about a deadline that might be coming up. Chief Floyd.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. So, I'm back tonight to bring back the discussion, approval for the mayor to approve purchase of five police vehicles. As you recall from our last discussion, the ordering window from our manufacturer is scheduled to be September 7th, and last year, those vehicles for law enforcement fleet sold out within a 24-hour period. So, our fleet manager, Mr. Ludeman, has requested this approval in advance, so when that window opens up, we're able to place that order, those vehicles would be, at best, delivered sometime next year. I know there were several questions from council when this was first brought up on previous agenda, and in your packets, you should have a spreadsheet that I created that is color-coded and hopefully much easier to follow that shows kind of the breakdown of our fleet for individuals that are assigned to the patrol division versus individuals that are assigned to non-patrol positions, which would include administrative staff like myself, our captains, our detectives, so...also, I know that there was a question previously on an annual maintenance cost for those vehicles, and Mr. Hoagland had someone in the Finance Division look that up through the Cartograph System. That number was calculated to be about $2,000 per That number was calculated to be about $2,000 per vehicle, and that is maintenance and fuel combined. It's not a system that I use, so I can't tell you why they didn't separate out fuel and maintenance. I was just told that that was the number they were able to get. So that is a total cost.
All right. That looks like you're ready for any additional questions or comments. So counsel, questions for Chief Floyd. I know the Public Safety Committee was able to work through some of this, but counsel.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Oh, thanks. So I'm just reviewing the spreadsheet. Chief Floyd, thank you. So which ones are, I'm a little bit unclear, like how many of them stay on island versus, even though I think the spreadsheet tells me that, how many on islands, how many officers take them home?
If it's, are you looking at just the individuals assigned to patrol, or you're looking at patrol and administrative functions combined?
Altogether.
It's about half.
Okay. So the white ones are the ones that stay in Anacortes, and all the colored lines are all the ones that go home with the, with staff?
That is correct, except for the blue-colored one, which is a non-commissioned person that lives off the island.
Gotcha.
So they do not take their vehicle home.
Okay. And then there are two vehicles with stars by them?
That was for my notes, though. Since we discussed this last time, those are commissioned officers assigned to patrol that are actively house shopping in Anacortes. But as of today, they do not live here, so I didn't count those. But we'd be looking to add a couple more local officers as residents soon.
Great. And the other question I had, I know as far as storage and where we keep these additional cars, did, I don't know if I got an answer to that. I don't think I did. Do we have room to store these?
Yes. So the Public Works Division is in the process of replacing our generator, and once that generator project is complete, the fence in our back parking lot is going to be moved to increase security for our employees that use the employee entrance. When that fence is moved, it'll open up two additional parking spots. We'll have plenty of parking for the vehicles that are stored there for individuals that do not take them home.
Okay. And then also, the money for these is included in the money from the levy lid lift that the voters approved, correct?
That was my understanding, as Mr. Hoagland had calculated in the cost of these vehicles to the mileage for the levy lid.
Right. So this isn't coming from our pre-existing budget. This is, this money is coming from the levy lid lift that the voters approved. Yes. Right. Okay.
That's my understanding. If, if that's incorrect, I would defer to Mr. Hoagland.
Here comes Mr. Hoagland to confirm or deny.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to make sure it was clear. The money that's included in the lid lift for vehicles is not a lump sum upfront that would be sufficient to purchase vehicles. It's an amount equal to funding that ongoing replacement charge.
So the $500,000 comes out of the city budget, but then ongoing replacement of those will come from the levy lid lift?
Correct.
So we need to carve $500,000 out of the budget?
Yeah, we'll need to.
We haven't done that.
That's right. So we'll need to come up with that initial $500,000 upfront.
And that will be when the cars get delivered, and we know that's going to be, you said, but please tell me again when that will be?
I believe it's an eight to 10-month lead time.
So next year?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I also want to note that that estimate per vehicle of $100,000 is a bit on the high side. Mr. Ludeman calculated it more accurately to be in the neighborhood of $80,000 when they're fully outfitted with radios, consoles, laptop computers, everything that an officer is going to need. But we tried to underpromise and over-deliver as far as coming in under that price budget. But it is a substantial number to note that we're more realistically looking in the neighborhood of $400,000.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
The, the, thank you for the table, by the way. The bottom two items are gray, 2023, and it looks like zero mileage. Are those two, like, existing pools for basically officer backfills?
Those are vehicles that were ordered last year.
As part of last year's window.
Actually, we actually missed the ordering window for last year. Mr. Ludeman was actually able to find two vehicles that went unclaimed at a dealership and grabbed them for what we would have purchased last year.
Nice.
Those vehicles were just delivered not that long ago. Our mechanics are in the process of outfitting them. They have not been assigned to an officer, so that's why they're in the gray. They will replace the two existing Crown Victorias that are left in our fleet, which are quite advanced in their age, and also will leave us one of the Caprices with higher mileage to use as a spare vehicle should someone need to send their vehicle up to the shops for repair.
And it sounds like that, that order to delivery to basically field-ready timeline is consistent, essentially like get in through the window September 7th. Roughly, like, the vehicle is ready, say, third quarter of 2024 for.
It sounds like that's an optimistic hope.
Okay.
I'm told that they plan on building those at the factory in October and November, but actual delivery has been quite delayed.
Varies.
We expect them probably much later in next year.
Okay. Are we, we're pretty confident to be able to get in on the 7th, though? It's not like we're getting Taylor Swift tickets, right?
I would defer to Mr. Ludeman for that.
Okay.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton, and then Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Okay. Sorry. So just to clarify, we have, so every, every officer has his or her own car currently?
Correct.
And so the two that haven't been outfitted, those are for the two, how many vacancies do we still have prior to the levy lid lift additional five?
As of today, we have two. I expect to, if things continue progressing, I'll fill one of those by the end of the summer.
Great. So these two cars will be maybe for the two officers that were just sworn in tonight?
Well, one of those was a records clerk, so she would not be assigned a vehicle.
Okay. So, sorry, I'm just trying to get how many, where we are with officers and the cars matched up right now.
Yeah. So we are currently just keeping pace and allows one spare with the.
With the Caprice.
Proposal that I'm giving you tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Cleland.
Yeah. I appreciate your questions, Ms. Moulton, because I think we kind of did a deep dive of that at our committee meeting, and I really appreciated seeing the table because it solidified the need for those additional cars. When you pull out the people that need to take their cars home because they need to be able to immediately respond to a situation regardless of where they are and not go all the way into the office or to the station, you know, and then the folks that are currently living on island and are able to take their, their vehicle home and again, respond if necessary in a crisis, I think it's a really important thing. My, one of the concerns I had at the committee level was how do these vehicles line up with the, the, people get, officers being ready to actually be in those vehicles? And with the CJTC Criminal Justice Training Center, in theory, starting in November, we've accelerated a number of those officers to start the training program in this September. I think a couple of them at least, two entry level, yes, and maybe, and then we have the lateral one that was sworn in today. So I wanted to make sure that we weren't going to have a vehicle sitting for a year or more if we didn't need to. And it seems like we're, between our recruitment and HR and the police department, ordering these vehicles makes a lot of sense for pre-planning purposes. So I was, I'm really pleased about it. Thank you.
And trying to make sure that there's no lag time in our vacancies. I've worked with our HR department, and we'll be giving a public safety test here locally on Saturday.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I am done with my questions, but I do have a statement from Mr. Walters that he asked me to read this evening. So this is from Mr. Walters. "I support the resolution to purchase police cars to allow for each officer to have a dedicated vehicle. Among other reasons, police vehicles contain a variety of officer gear, including their service weapons and other gear fit to each officer. If we don't maintain a vehicle for each officer, officers would spend substantial amount of time moving that gear from car to car, and some of that gear may not fit in another vehicle that they would have to transfer to. Time to transfer gear reduces time on patrol, and fewer vehicles could affect our ability to improve our shift schedule, which is one of my primary goals for the public safety lever, levy. However, if we are to spend $80,000 for each vehicle, we ought to also consider expanding our current take-home policy. Currently, only officers who live on island can take their vehicles home. This is not sufficient incentive to get officers to move to Fidalgo Island. A better policy could allow any officer who lives within a 45-minute commute to take their vehicle home, which appears to be the industry standard and would be a substantial incentive as a recruiting tool for our new and future officers. The city would therefore get much more bang for its buck. Thank you for considering my comments. I urge support of the resolution. Signed, Ryan Walters."
All right. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Actually, this is astric. Any member of the public wish to comment? Okay, counsel, action?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve resolution 3128, authorizing the mayor to approve the advanced purchase of five police cars.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Hubig, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath to approve resolution 3128. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, call for the vote, please.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Next up is item 6E, interlocal agreement with Skagit County for EDA fiber expansion project funding. And I didn't give you enough time to pull up the PowerPoint. All right, here we go.
Mayor, counsel, it's nice to have members in the audience today. Tonight, I am presenting two items that are specific to the area of our fiber optic expansion that we have nicknamed the EDA area. The area that is, then, the city currently is, has service in the areas that are this, this map area. But the EDA area is the, the yellow area. That's really the backfilling areas that we currently serve now. I thought it just might be helpful to have a little bit of background about that. It will pass over 1,800 premises and is projected to cost about $5.445 million. So just a little bit of information about kind of the background of that. But tonight, what we are doing, and this comes from part of the presentation that we gave to Skagit County, I'm asking for the, to get approval to execute an interlocal cooperative agreement with Skagit County. This will allow us access to $500,000 that will help to offset the costs associated with the EDA fiber optic expansion area. This funding comes through Skagit County's economic development, public facilities, distressed rural county sales and use tax. And so it's competitively provided for through the county where you go and apply for these funds. So it's very appreciative then that we were awarded $500,000 to help offset these costs, and they'll be put to good use as we move forward with the expansion of the EDA area. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I was going to say, maybe you start out with, this is a resolution to accept $500,000. Sorry. Counsel, questions for Ms. Shu?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I just would like to say, good job for securing that funding. And I move that city council authorize the mayor to execute interlocal cooperative agreement as presented between the city and Skagit County.
Second.
All right. A motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Mr. McDougall to accept the interlocal agreement with Skagit County for EDA fiber expansion project funding. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. On to item 6F, contract award, EDA fiber expansion project materials. Ms. Shu.
Thanks, Mayor and counsel. It's nice to have the EDA area be the theme for tonight's presentations on fiber optics. Again, the same map applies here. The city was awarded a $2.5 million grant from the Economic Development Administration, which is part of the U.S. Department of Commerce, to help offset the costs associated with building this portion of the project. As we've been going through that process, it is very detailed because it does include federal funding. But we are pleased tonight to ask the city council to consent to award a contract in the amount of $778,962.22 to WBE Technologies LLC. We went through a competitive bid process for the materials. We had seven responsive bettors, and WBE was the, determined to be the least expensive of those bids. I do want to indicate that it is $246,000 less than our engineer's estimate, so that's a nice benefit to help support this project, and that we've been very pleased with the improvement in the lead time for materials. At different times, we projected that it could take up to a year for these materials to arrive, and the majority of these materials are projected to be available within four to six weeks. I think 12 weeks is the longest lead time. So that is really good news for this project to continue to move forward. The motion is specific to indicate that it's authorizing the mayor to sign pending EDA contract approval. And they have gotten back to us since the package was put together that they are supportive with us moving forward with that. But we wanted to make sure we had that included as part of the proposed motion. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I think, I appreciate you highlighting that because every time I see EDA, I just, it's an opportunity to thank the staff for the hard work, Ms. Shu and Mr. Lindberg and the team, really, and many other departments, legal.
Entire city team.
Public Works, yeah. It's EDA Economic Development Administration, the $2.5 million sometimes had us questioning the amount of work that, the additional work to get those federal dollars, but ultimately we're getting there. But I know it's a lot of work, so again, this is, this is a big step to our, the last area of our, of our fiber build-out. Counsel, questions for Ms. Shu?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
I was going to ask about lead times, but that's fantastic news. That's really good news to hear about the improvements there. And also, I want to commend the fiber department for putting out bill of materials, spreadsheets that rival the street department and number of lines and complexity. No, actually, my real question is, this is all construction materials, like conduit, fiber, lashing, stuff like that, not computer equipment like OLTs and things like that?
That's correct. So this is purely materials to build the network, everything that will occur in the public right of way or in areas where we have easements, not anything that goes onto private property that would be part of the installation process.
Great. Thank you. And also, thanks to the county and the team for the work, working with the county to secure that additional funding as well.
Ms. Cleland.
Yes, I just want to thank you, the staff and mayor for applying for these funds and receiving the $500,000, because that's $500,000 that we don't have to then go and try to bond in the future. And then again, it's always exciting. I questioned you why it was so much less than the engineer's expectation, or expected amount, but looks good, and I, the detail, the level of detail is much appreciated. With that, I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign contract 23-013-FBR-001 with WE Technologies LLC in the amount of $778,962.22 to provide the materials for the EDA fiber expansion project pending. contract approval by the Economic Development Administration.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Ms. Cleland McGrath, a second by Ms. Hubig to approve the contract as with WBE Technologies LLC, 778-96222, for the materials for EDA fiber expansion, pending contract approval with the EDA. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote, please.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Well, thanks for that work. And before I adjourn the meeting, well, I'll adjourn the meeting, but I'd like to invite the scouts up if they would like to get a photo with counsel, without counsel. But I'll adjourn the meeting now with no further business before the council. Thanks. But feel free to come on up and get a picture.